We've got a council meeting with order this evening. And Ruth, why don't you start us out with a pledge?
I would like the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, did you have a chance to take a look at the meetings from September 26th meeting? And if so, we have any corrections or additions? Did not entertain a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Fitzwater, seconded by Wilson, those in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you very much. The Board of Public Works and Safety meeting minutes for the 7/21st are in your packet for information purposes. Okay, let's move right along to Communications. Boo Fest event, Board of Works approved October the 27th, 4:30 to 6:00 PM downtown Boo Fest. You know, gonna be standing on the corner handing out candy, that's when it's gonna be. I tell you, several years ago, I'm gonna rabbit trail here, Bob. Several years ago, we're talking about five, six years ago, I was down there standing in my leather Eisenhower jacket and shirt. Doctors, kid comes up to me, junior high age, and he goes, "I know who you're dressed up like." You remember this? And I'm like, "Who am I dressed up like?" He says, "Dick Cheney." It was a junior high kid, and Tom Bear was standing there, and he about flipped. He said, "We gotta give the kid credit for knowing who Dick Cheney is, but I went home and took a nap, man. I must've looked really bad." So Boo Fest anyhow is coming right up on the 27th. Okay, our trick-or-treating hours are on Halloween, October the 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And hopefully we have good weather for all those nights. Gottmans and Central Doctor, they'll be the same. Then the Holiday Stroll Rochester Downtown Partnership Event is set for December the 1st, 6:00 to 8:00 PM downtown. Okay, got lots of things coming up. Okay, let's slip on down to our public hearing. Additional appropriations for Loewit and RDC. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved?
Moved by Wilson, seconded by Ruth, those in favor? Okay, we're now in a public meeting hearing for those two issues. Shotta, you wanna take the floor on that?
Yes, just a minute. This was, we brought this up before, Chief Butler, we'll start with him since he's present. These are for the air packs that we were planning on purchasing, was in the budget for next year, and he was able to actually save us about $70,000 by taking advantage of a sale that they had the end of this year.
Correct, NSA had to buy one tank and second tank free, and then everything else was at a significant discount. And then first year, that was the quote that was given for bid that they beat by 70. And he was afraid actually the first year prices are gonna go up, so we probably actually saved more than that. Good job.
The air packs, probably you wouldn't know this, but air packs have expiration dates. So if that hits, it's a good idea to do something. And Tom did a nice job of working that out, thank you much, Tom.
Thank you.
So, and I'm sorry, did I?
I was just gonna say 15 years, right? Is that how long those packs?
Yeah, the tanks are good for 15, so we can hydro them twice throughout the process every five years. The other packs were actually starting to have some electronic problems, and we actually had three out of service that is just the cost of repair. This manufacturer warranties most electronics through the whole 15, or I'm sorry, I take it back, through the lifetime of ownership of the pack, so if we have an issue with something, they'll take care of it. We're using rechargeable batteries for this system, and they are guaranteed for, warranted for 15 years, so we shouldn't have an issue. Where before, we were buying hundreds of double As twice a year to put in the packs, and that were, some of the corrosion problem was happening is depending on, and I used the specific brand that they, but then they changed it because the dursals were having issues of corrosion inside, and that wasn't covered in warranty. I could've went after dursal, that wasn't gonna work, so we lost a few packs that way. We were able to fix a few, but that was one of the biggest glitches with those, so now we're rechargeable and don't have to worry about that process.
So we're needing to move some money. We've got the money.
Yeah, it was sitting there, so.
Well, what it is, is our current, Bob, this will be your first time going through an additional appropriation. With government funds, we set a budget. With that budget, if we have to expend above and beyond what the budget is set for, we don't have any other line items that will cover that expense that we can transfer down, then we have to do an additional appropriation. We have to have cash balance available as well as the invoices applicable. Takes council action in order to do it, and then it has to be submitted to the state for final approval, especially with tax-supported funds. These two funds are actually not what they don't, they don't consider tax-supported, they consider them home rule funds. So for the Public Safety Fund, Loewit Public Safety, the $325,000 in addition is both a combination of Andy's request. He had a sale, he ended up with kind of a similar thing as Tom. Board of Works approved him to move forward with the purchase to replace.
Which we'll let you go through here in just a second.
Yeah, give him that, and then the redevelopment commission. This is to cover some additional expense with Apache Drive on professional services. So it's the same process. In order for us to be able to pay those invoices, we've gotta increase our appropriation balance in the budget, so that way it doesn't take it to the red. So what's not originally budgeted?
Andy, you wanna talk about your?
Yeah, we ended up getting new tasers, and quite honestly, Shotta was doing the additional appropriation for Tom, so I asked her, "Can you throw one in for me too?" Just as simple as two than one.
And that's, that's not unusual. We see the fire department carrying the police department a lot.
Oh.
Get a paddle board out to dunking donuts.
They know where to plow for us when they need it. Yeah, the tasers we currently have, we've had some of those 15 years. They're called the X-26s, they're not supported by Taser anymore. They've been phasing those out for some time. I thought this was a good opportunity just to get all brand-new tasers. We got the newest version, it's called the Taser 10. It's the latest and greatest. And we went ahead and purchased all of them for all of our officers, brand-new ones. Instead of trying to get three this year and three next year, we just get the bullet, got all of them, and it's a five-year program where any batteries, issues, probes, they will replace for five years. Every officer has to deploy two probes every year for recertification. They'll send us those. We just send them, and pay for it to tell them how many we need, and they send them to us. Pretty good program, I think, but they were salty, they were $54,000 and change for the 13 tasers and the program, but we got 260 probes also. So, yeah, we went ahead and did that. We're actually having training on those tomorrow to get all of our officers certified and enroll those out to the officers.
You still taste one of the officers that volunteered?
If they want to, yeah.
Okay.
We volunteered you.
No, 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 I thought the Board of Works said fig layover. He's always interested in answering up, he'd step up for that, but no, you, I thought that you had an officer once in a while who would taste, so they understood what the taser was all about.
When new officers get certified, they have to go through that. Yeah, they have to go through that. We don't actually shoot them with the probes, but we.
They know what the Energizer part's all about.
We hook 'em up to it, and they take the five-second ride, just so they know what it's like and what it's all about, and how they can understand, if they get taste with their own weapon, how they can be incapacitated.
Yeah.
That's why they have that long extension cord that's plugged in, and on the end there's just two wires. Pull up the oldos, and then they plug it in, and you get the five seconds.
There you go. Now you're seeing why it's difficult to get a police officer. Like, day one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's good stuff, Andy. Are you saving your discussion about the guns, the service guns for your presentation?
I thought, I don't know, I thought we'd already talked about that.
Did you already talk about that?
We're upgrading our firearms.
I think we talked about that last week. It's just been an opportunity to upgrade these folks to get them where they need to be. Okay, so.
Unless there's any public questions, or council has any further questions on?
Any comment from the public? Beth, you need the public.
No, I'm very interested, very impressed.
Anything from the media, any? Okay, all right, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. This one, seconded by Wilson, those in favor? Okay, now then, I would entertain a motion to accept the appropriation as stated. Will sir?
It's in a resolution, so you'll wanna present that in a proper.
That would be Resolution 052023?
By title?
By title, yes.
Yeah, let's go.
Because it's a resolution, so.
By title only. Okay, Ruth made the motion, seconded, those in favor? Shotta, you wanna read it?
Resolution 052023, additional appropriation.
Okay, and accept Resolution 5-2023. So the motion, okay, John made the motion, Wilson seconded, those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. That was 330.
The total, I apologize, the additional appropriation for the Loewit Fund is $325,000, and for the redevelopment fund is $100,000, so your total is $425,000 for both funds.
Okay, moving along, there's, well, new business, just a comment, we did have the presentation of the ready grant check last week, groundbreaking Apache Drive project. Those of you wanting the million-dollar check, we have it out in the hallway. You can't stick it in your wallet, it's at Davis's desk. And that, that was county and city collaborating out there, and just as soon as we had the official groundbreaking there, the heavy equipment started moving in, and they're working towards that. They will do that for a month, clearing of stuff such out there. And USI is updating the redevelopment commission tomorrow morning on progress, and then the construction folks shut down in about a month for the winter, and then they'll pick it back up in the spring. So that's, that should be one of the more seamless projects. There's no, no old infrastructure, nothing to deal with, it's clean sheet, but, you know, you see how it goes, but that's the first normal gap where you have not, haven't had to deal with current infrastructure.
It's program.
Well, I mean, it's a field, yeah. The only, the only issue that might be a little cumbersome is water. Okay.
Sir, I was, there was included in our packet a letter from HRP Construction. Is that, were you gonna hit that later on, or is that part of this conversation too, some of the changes, where all those came from, or?
Oh, that was part of the Board of Works, is what that was from. That was the approval of their, that additional expense.
That's where the additional appropriations came?
No, 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 not additional. On Apache, that was the, down Peachtree where they missed the sewer, additional hookup for the lines and some additional removal of the trees and the vents. That $470,000, that was the change order from HRP per the design changes that the Board of Works approved.
Yeah, that's the only hiccups that could develop, like you started to say. Once you start digging in the ground, you might find some things. I'm not, I'm thinking they're probably gonna come back at some point, need a little bit more for de-watering because of the water issues that we typically see. They do have some muddies that are built into that, hopefully it's enough. Okay, anything else, Bob? All right, going down to old business then. The Guardian advocates, remember these folks, they've been to us a couple times now. John, I know, I know you remember, right? Yeah, they've requested $5,000 every year, and they first year, what, we did it out of the mayor's promotional fund? And then the next time, we asked, "How many people are you servicing in Fulton County now?" I don't know, John, refresh my memory, it doesn't seem like they're picking up a lot of people in Fulton County.
I was thinking, last year was here, the last time, what was it, three or five?
They went from 11 to 15, and they've had, from beginning to end, yeah, I mean, they started two years ago with one, and now they're up to 15 that they've served in.
As far as that they're working on, that are involved right now, it was three or five?
Current, yes. The total was 15.
Yeah. That's over a period of time.
Yeah, that, well, no, that was just last year, just since last year.
Last year.
They've added, and she said there was more cases that they were working on. And I went back because she's, since they come in on the tail end of our budgeting, we, I went back to double-check because at one point, we had added them to the budget, we paid out the last two years, and because they're at the tail end, I was thinking that we actually, the 2023 budget, we covered them for '23, but we won't pay it out until '24. So it won't be paid out actually until, but for them, it's actually considered for their '24 grant cycle. And then you weren't here at the last meeting, and she said the grant that they utilized through the core system, that will know, they're looking at that money's being pretty much depleted by 2025.
Oh, of course they are.
So.
That's a.
So now she's, she's really looking to try to find, you know, to try to find that support. And our portion was 18,000, Fulton County was 18,000 that they spend, but for Fulton County, it's 18,000.
And had they gotten anything from the county at that point?
I believe they do. I believe they have 5,000 from the county.
5,000 from the county.
If we do the, this 5,000, then they've at least got 10,000 of their 18 that they spent here.
But I thought we agreed with them that since we've already, we're really good, and we don't may have to make a decision on any of that for this year, since we've already appropriated funds for '24, so we don't really make, need to make a decision until next year.
Right, exactly. She just, she wanted to make sure you guys were updated, and Brian didn't wanna make any, take any action because we had, we only had four council members last month, so he wanted to wait, make sure everybody was still okay with it before there was any, but as far as it being, it's in the budget, so we don't really need to take action unless you just want it on record again that, yes, you approve moving forward with it. And then she'll send us a letter December, January, and we'll cut the check down to '24 cycle.
We owe them the check right now, or?
No, we're good right now. Because she doesn't want the money until she's ready to actually allocate it towards her budget, so she, she doesn't want it sitting there waiting. So she'll wait until it's the beginning of '24 or something.
So we really don't have to do anything to it at all?
Not really.
And I would suggest that.
That takes a chip mark right there, okay. All right, that takes us down to ordinances and resolutions. We've already taken care of the first resolution on the list. 062023, that is the budget for '24. Shotta, you have the floor on that?
As we presented at the public hearing, the tax rate and budget, nothing, I mean, obviously you guys didn't make any changes, so everything is still the same, and our proposed tax levy is gonna be 1.1888 for the tax-supported funds, and the adopted levy will be $4,63638, and our adopted budget will be $9,74700. Remember, some of this is due to the grants. We have some, and our home rule funds are $5,632,635. We have to appropriate money to spend out of our grant funds, so we're anticipating the ready grant will be coming out for Apache Drive, which will also include our ARPA fund, which will also include, we had a grant fund for our sidewalks, our ADA sidewalk grant, so all of those extra dollar amounts for those grants are included in here. We're not getting revenue in, most of them are a reimbursable grant, so we have to pay it out, the state will send us money back, but we have to appropriate for it. Otherwise, we do John's favorite thing, and we do more additional appropriations.
It always works.
So our budget includes the, here's what we think we're gonna spend for these additional grants, and the money's coming out for that. So nothing has been, has changed from what was presented or what was discussed at the budget session with you guys. It's just in our formal format, and I get to check the boxes to say whether you vote yes or no. Now, I will say that the other thing, again, Bob, your first time through this, it is time-sensitive. We are, because we normally adopt our budget in September, but this year, we, due to circumstances, we pushed everything back. Instead of having an August, September public hearing and adoption, we did September and October. So we are under the wire to make sure that we hit the state's deadlines. We do have to have everything submitted before November. So I have five days to get the budget uploaded to the state, and our salary ordinance for resolution, which will also be coming up here, that has to be adopted before November 1st. I was very glad to see all the two of you tonight.
Yeah, a little hard rest if we didn't have the forum.
Yes.
As we always are.
Such a meeting, another one of John's favorite things.
Yeah, you know, but in eight years, I think we've only had to walk out of a long time. That's pretty good, though, if you don't know good. The other thing too, in eight years, if you, Bob, you're relatively new, if you go and, you know, this is not to be snarky or anything, but if you go to some other municipal meetings in other towns, or even county meetings, appropriations are, what do I wanna say? A regular part of their life at every meeting, moving money here to there, here to there. We haven't had to do that. You old timers know. We do it towards the end of the year, and everything's shored up, but we haven't had to do that at every meeting, which is good, that's good stuff. Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion for the reading of Resolution 062023?
So moved by title only?
Seconded by Fitzwater, those in favor? Okay, Shotta, you want to read it by title only?
Sure. Resolution 062023, 2024 budget.
Okay, I have a motion to approve 062023. Ruth?
Second.
Fitzwater, second, those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Okay, Resolution 072023, salary ordinance.
Again, same thing, this is standard, same as every year, our traditional format. We've already discussed the employee raises, budget department heads have already presented to you, so everything is in here. The only caveat that I will say is neither Ted nor I took a pay raise for next year, so the salaries will be the same for the mayor and the treasurer's offices. Everybody else did, we recommended a 50 cent across the board for full-time, 25 cents for part-time. All the rest of the benefits stayed the same, we didn't make any changes there, so the insurance, that is one, that, you know, come next year, because we do midterm renewals on our medical insurance, that is something that may come up next year, that may need to be changed depending on where rate negotiations come in and what our renewal rates come in at. Beyond that, I, there isn't anything special. The department heads, Public Safety did request for certifications, they asked for some changes, which I believe, again, was discussed in our budget hearing.
And we got any of the probationary salary raise, right?
Correct, yes.
Double check?
Yep, and 52.5.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the volunteer overnight up to 50.
Correct, yes, we got that in, up to 50, and your run time, your run amount's still at 17.
17. And as you all know, relative to the health insurance situation, negotiating really hard for that every year, we are seeing a bump, but everybody else is talking double-digits, we never have a double-digit bump. Ours was 8% this year. Over the eight years, we've averaged about 3% over the eight-year period. So we hit that really hard because it's pretty important, we not only have limited runnings to work with, but we have a very good package, you know, our people pay a dollar a year for that package. It's a very good package. Okay, do I have a motion to have a reading of Resolution 072023?
So moved.
And second?
By title only.
By title only. So moved, gentlemen, seconded by Ruth, those in favor? Okay, Shotta, by title only?
Resolution 072023, a resolution fixing the salaries for the employees of the City of Rochester, Indiana for the year 2024, to the common council of the City of Rochester, Indiana.
Do I have a motion to accept 072023? Wilson, made the motion, seconded by Fitzwater, those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, takes us down to our department heads. Thank you, Chief Butler and Chief Shotta for being here this evening. Everybody else is tied up with something. Let's shake this up. Gee, Shotta, you wanna go first?
Oh, I'm not ready to throw you off.
You're not ready?
Yeah. For the month of September, I will get you copies, I apologize, I got here late. For the month of September, we have 30 accidents, three of those were personal injury. We issued 43 warnings, we're 40 total offenses, 30 case reports, 510 calls for service, 25 blockouts, excuse me, nine towed vehicles, and 19 people incarcerated. And then I have the crimes, domestic battery took the top with five people arrested in September for that. Other than that, last Thursday, the Board of Works held interviews with applicants for our police officer position that we have opened. They made a conditional offer to Jonathan Easter. Jonathan's from Cass County, currently fixing up in his great parents' old house in 12 Mile. He's got a criminal law, or criminal justice degree, so we're looking forward to getting him started, and that'll put us back up to full staff.
It was a good interview.
It did what?
You started to loosen up a little bit.
Yeah.
Would you like to have mentioned to the, how many ruggers you had for the month?
Possession of methamphetamine, excuse me, possession of methamphetamine was just once, one for the month of September. We did have four people charged with resisting law enforcement, so I'm not sure what was up to that.
Any questions for the chief? And Tom?
All right, good evening. Month of September for the Fire Department, structure fires two in Rochester Township, one in Newcastle Township, mutual aids, one in Henry Township, one in Kewanah, one in Albinobbe. Field fires, one in Richland Township. Auto fire alarms, two in the city, two in Rochester Township. Accidents, five in the city, two in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township. Medical assist, 13 in the city, seven Rochester Township, two Newcastle Township, one Richland Township. Lift assist, one in Richland Township. Gas leak, one in the city, CO checks, one in the city, canceled calls, one in the city, so should add up with my new math, is 46 runs, and we conducted one. So should add up with my new math, it's forty-six runs, and we conducted one night of training. Update on the, or on the appropriations, air packs are at the station, been inventoried, training's been conducted, and they are in service.
Thomas, on the, uh, on the, uh, committee, the ambulance service situation as well, and you have another meeting, any more meetings to?
Uh, we, we conducted two days of interviews with three potential companies. We're now vending them with their references, and then, uh, I think the sixth, we go back and make a recommendation to the commissioners, and then they'll take that to the council and figure out funding.
Very good. Okay, any questions for the chief? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, now the reports, I'll write down the route here, planning commission.
We're not going to have a meeting until something comes up, so.
Somebody lucked out on that. I'm going to suggest the new administration put all those things in a hat. Draw them out, because, boy, she did well. Okay. Park Board, Robert?
They met back on October 22nd. They approved, or no, back on the 12th, I believe. They approved an event for October 22nd in the city park. I'm not sure how that came out, but that was a Joe Nestor and some church groups. Joe Nestor was the performer, and there were some church groups, Aaron Owens worked with that. I don't know if anybody saw that or what the past, I think that was the past week.
Did we see that apart?
No.
Okay.
Uh, Lee from the golf course also reported that the carts should arrive in seven to 10 days. So I don't know if they actually did or not.
We got part of them.
Good, just part?
Yeah, I think there's ten that they received.
He was supposed to have gotten the rest of them yesterday, and I did not see him today to ask if they arrived yet or not. I have the invoice with all of their serial numbers.
I see them on the course, the green, they're, you could see some.
So I think, but that was the expected, was yesterday they would be delivered, the rest of them.
So I know he was looking forward to that, and had some, sounded like some anxious, anxious moments with the sales rep a little bit, their team, but I'm glad they already got those, so it'll be something out, out of his hair anyway. And then he's playing a Greenskeepers Revenge Tournament, which is coming right up on October 29th. That's for the people that helped him take care of the greens that signed up to do that.
Is that where he ties Anthony to a post, and they just beat the hell out of him?
I'm not sure.
You haven't, you haven't weighed in that one?
No, no, no. Marking down the clothing inventory in the, in the pro shop there, starting this fall. They got permission to do that. Uh, he feels like the outings are getting rebooked next year. He feels like he's got eighty-five percent of rebooked, did this year. And, uh, he also was very positive about the children's clinic that he put on. He had averaged thirty-one participants a day.
Did you see any of those pictures? They were, they were pretty cute.
Yeah.
He did a good job with that.
And the way he reported that the work around the dam, that area is pretty well done. And he purchased a truck from Parks Department from Kewaunaw for seventy-two hundred dollars. He's still fighting with the pool liner. He has found some holes in the pool liner, but he didn't think that's enough for the amount of water that they've been losing, so he's still kind of looking. And they're putting up some go parking signs at their ball courts. And I cheated because I used Wes's notes instead of mine, because I couldn't read this.
Good job, Wes.
Any questions for Wes?
Finally, sir.
Okay, uh, solid waste animal adoption.
Those groups only meet every two months, and we didn't meet this month, so reports.
Okay. Tree Board and EMS, Brian?
The Tree Board does not meet, but they, we, after, in last month, they had the movie at the, at the theater.
Lorax.
And email I came in, it was positive, but I don't have numbers.
Yeah.
We got me in October.
That fulfills the requirement for the Arbor.
Correct.
Uh, and Tree City.
But even if, even if nobody showed up, we still have that requirement.
Correct.
I don't know numbers, who, how many showed up, percentage, families, whatever. Uh, they are still looking at reviewing the incoming requests for removals, put-ins, and the, uh, the contracts, and the key, on top of all that, you know, not be, we're going to look at everything.
They've done a really good job.
Oh, I think so, yeah.
Yes, I mean, you know, you've been to a lot of those meetings over the years, and they can be pretty mundane. They can be pretty mundane.
It's a thankless job.
It is, it is, and, uh, they've, they've all done a great job.
Yeah, I agree.
About EMS, Brian?
I've been to any meetings, Chief Butler essentially gave a, a good report as to what's happening there.
Yeah, okay. Any questions for Councilman Fitzwater? Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Water Board, John?
Yes, Water Board met this month, as we always do. And one thing I thought was, uh, interesting that I'd never considered before. Uh, we're putting new, uh, we're putting mixers in all the water towers.
Right.
A mixer in the water tower. Well, in Logan's Word, I guess last year, they had a water tower froze up during the wintertime. And then that causes major problems, major financial fixes. Uh, it does two things, of course, it will keep that problem from happening. Uh, it will also cut down, uh, on chemical usage supposedly, because it will keep the chemicals that are in the tank moving around, and just hopefully it will make for a better water supply. And the chemicals, they say they'll cut down on possibly usage here, the chemicals. So they won't be staked, staked somewhere. Now, it does come with a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, but it's ve- very well worth it. And then, uh, then for Peerless, it's going to hook up the SCADA system, uh, for twenty-four hundred dollars. That's all for all three towers, and so it brings us to seventy-seven thousand, uh, four hundred. And of course, that was passed, and it'll be a good thing. It's a good safety measure, and in the long run, with terribly cold weathers, and for just saving on chemicals, I think the city may be steps ahead on. I think the Water Board made a very good move there. Uh, they've also done to, uh, raise the tap fees. And this was a thing that we've been behind on for so far, on water tap fees. And we're raising it as of the first of the year to five thousand dollars. We've just been behind on it, and terribly behind on the fees. And so we're going to move up just a little bit, and then it was mentioned that maybe just to move it up and get, maybe get ahead of the game a little bit, so you're not staying in the, in the back so long, which we have been, and we've been, actually been losing money. So this gives us a chance to at least stay ahead of the game for a while. And, uh, it was approved, and I think that's going to be a good thing for the city. And it'll, it'll generate the money, needs to be generated for these costs, right? We've been having tap fees and losing money, and that's, you don't run, as I've said so many times, you run a city like a business, and you, you don't give things away by, I'm sorry, you just can't lose money and keep it going, and we've been very fortunate. Um, other than that, uh, we're not going to, uh, sell bulk water anymore. And it's just that Derek brought the request up that is really for the charges that are made on bulk water, that it's just, it's just time-consuming, it's not beneficial to the water department. So bulk water is, is done, it's going to be done. And that will, did put a date on that, but I'm, I'm assuming that will be the first of the year also. And, uh.
Is that usually for pools, John?
Yes, pools, and, uh, just in general, uh.
Bulk water tanks, essentially what it is, is there's a spigot.
Storage.
Street barn, and it's, it's not really designed well, and it's not safe. So bulk water tankers, huh?
That's gone, it's gone.
And it's, yeah, so they, we've just reduced that. Now, what they do, will still continue to do is the metered sales. So, for instance, the festivals downtown, they'll come and get, uh, we have a multi-meter device that hooks onto the fire hydrants, and it will meter, you know, three or four vendors coming off of that. So that, that we will still offer, because we contract the sales on that, we contract the meter numbers to be able to build that back out. But the bulk water.
Bulk water was just a, it was just a time-consuming loss, time-consuming loss. Other than that, everything's running wonderful. Congratulations to Derek on that, again, and that'd be all.
Yeah, thanks, John. Yeah, the, uh, the circulation of the water towers, that's something. They built a water tower, they had a couple here as a possible situation. Everybody always looks at it as an add, that's an added expense we can do without. Until you really get into it, see the benefits of something like that. How to be about a three-year payback on the chemical situation, but there will be a return on that investment.
It's just something I would, I would have never thought of.
No, no, I mean, you just think, okay, the water's the water, well, it has.
Looking at those towers for a year, the whole life.
It's treated, yeah.
You never thought about something, they take the water.
Something settling, yeah.
Usually takes an event, where you go.
Yeah, yeah.
My work.
They're glad it's not us.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Lawyer Perkins, it's good to see you tonight.
Get in, suit and date.
How was your vacation?
Uh, wonderful.
Great.
All right.
Any legal issues we need to talk about?
I don't think, we have anything that needs to come before council today, no.
Okay. Any ADA concern?
Not that I, I just, I briefly touched on the sidewalk grant that we have. The, we did do the letting on that, and we got that back. Did come in a little bit over our engine estimate, so the project construction cost is at eight. I did not bring the paper with me. I want, I believe it came in at eight, eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's about right. And actually, uh, it's a little higher because the initial concrete vendors, there were six, I think there were six of them. The one who came in the lowest didn't involve requirements.
So the state.
So that'd go to the next lowest.
And then, so those did come out, and again, this is a state, it's federally backed, so there's, we have to jump through the state hoops on this particular project. But that construction should start come spring as soon as the weather breaks. And the areas of concentration are going to be over towards Riddle Elementary and Columbia Elementary. This ties into, for those of you that were here back when we started the Safe Routes to Schools program, uh, that was a coordinated effort with the county, the area plan office, us, to try to identify areas throughout the city that sidewalks and pedestrian traffic needed to be approved. Uh, when this is, this started in 2019, and we knew that it was going to be a fiscal year, construction year of 2024. This is one of those transportation grants that is a four- or five-year stretch. But they, they should have it actually completed by, I believe the, I wish Randy was here. He's actually the project manager for it. But I believe the contract says they're supposed to be completed by July 31st.
July 31st, yeah.
So it won't be a long, uh, project for them. We've already removed the trees, so obstacles that were in their way with this, with these areas have already been removed. So it should just be a matter of coming in, tearing it up. We are saving the bricks, because there's going to be some areas that were the original brick sidewalks. I did ask, that was put in the contract, I did ask for those to be saved. And the redevelopment commission was actually excited about that, because they think they've got some projects coming up that they might be able to reutilize those bricks for, um, some downtown revitalization ideas coming up. So that was kind of a good thing that we, we did that. But as the, as far as the, being the ADA coordinator, uh, the only other ADA issues we have are our standard fifty-fifty sidewalk. We had three of them, we're still waiting on return quote on a couple areas that we needed to have requoted, because in order to meet the ADA specifications, we have to take the cycle, we have to have a fully crossable street, meaning that the crosswalk on the north-sided street has to match the crosswalk on the south side of the street to make it safe. So we had to go back and ask the contractors to add some additional, uh, information to the.
You also have to do all four corners when you do one area injection?
No, they started out with that when we first started down the transition lane.
They did, it didn't seem like it'd been that long ago.
Yeah, 2012.
Yeah.
But they backed off on that and said that as long as the pedestrian can continue travel, and if you can cross the street and continue travel, you don't have to have two areas to cross it, just one. So that helps it. Unfortunately, one of the corners is one of those corners where the slope is going to be, it's, it's extremely high. It's got a hill, so it's going to have to cut back, and then you're going to have to put in your barrier along the, the residence, yeah, to protect the erosion. So that's why we opted to go the, the single for right now, and then we'll come back and keep that other one on the list.
Good. Okay.
Will we need to advise the schools about any of the, you talk about that work is going to be near the schools?
Mm-hmm.
Lock and guard, or that's much walking, but they're, everybody's driving.
Yes, once they actually, once they roll it out, the construction firm will give us kind of their timeline and areas where they're going to be concentrating. And once we have that, then we will communicate that absolutely with the schools, because it can impact, especially buses. Now, Columbia probably more than Riddle, because there's more concentrated area over there, and there's more vehicle traffic. Riddle tends, they have a few more pedestrian, they have more kids walking at Riddle than they do in Columbia. But yeah, we will absolutely communicate that once we know.
Okay, any other ADA issues we don't cover?
I have had numbers, I mean.
Yeah. Uh, anything from the council? I would entertain.
We should do it, too.
Those in favor? Thank you very much.